30th, 2020, the meeting is called for a specific purpose to consider a complaint fired under Section 20 of the Development Charges Act. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at the special meeting. We'll begin with the meeting with the city clerk calling for the role of attendance at today's meeting.
Members of council, I will call your names for attendance. Counselor Dillon?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Singh? Counselor Singh? I'll come back to you. Counselor Fortini?
Here, Peter. If I want to have the phone, couldn't get on the computer.
Thank you. Counselor Williams? Counselor Williams? I'll come back to you. Counselor Maderos? I'll come back to you. Counselor Bowman?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Palessi?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Counselor Willens?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Visante?
I'm here.
Thank you. Counselor Santos?
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Brown is present. Counselor Singh? Counselor William?
I am here.
Thank you. Counselor Maderos? So, Mr. Mayor, we have nine members present. We do have quorum.
Okay. We are now at item two approval of the agenda. We have a motion moved by Counselor Williams, seconded by Counselor Palessi, to approve the agenda. Instead of seeking record or vote for this item, I'll ask that there is anyone opposed to this motion. Otherwise, your vote will count in the affirmative. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. Meetings of municipal councils are to be open to the public for transparency and accountability, and our meeting will continue to be as well, with a few precautions and limitations. In-person attendance at this meeting will be very limited. Members and most staff are participating electronically in this meeting. The public can still access and then participate in the meeting in a number of ways. You can watch the meeting remotely through the city's live stream, registering with the city's clerk's office as a virtual delegate, registering to attend the meeting in person to observe the meeting, submitting questions about the agenda business or decisions made by emailing the city clerk's office at cityclerksoffice@brampton.ca with your question, which may be read into the public record during the 15-minute public question period. A final reminder for members of council before we start to consider today's agenda business, please ensure your video is off, microphone is muted until you're assigned the floor, then you can turn on both when you speak. This will help ensure the meeting flows more efficiently. Item number three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does anyone have any declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Hearing none, the court goes on note for the meeting minutes. Delegations. This is a statutory hearing to be held by council pursuant to Section 20 of the Development Charges Act 1997. The hearing will be conducted according to the rules established by the Statutory Powers Procedures Act. Proceedings of council are usually governed by the provisions of the Municipal Act 2001, the city's procedural bylaw. However, in the case, the hearing under Section 20 of the Development Charges Act, council as a decision-maker is bound by the Statutory Powers Procedures Act. The SPPA requires, among other things, that hearings be held in public, allows for parties to make submissions to the decision-maker, and provides for rules governing the hearing. In addition to the requirement of SPPA, the council also owes a duty of procedural fairness to the parties involved. In this context of the municipal hearing, this means that members have a duty to keep an open mind when conducting administrative hearings. The rules of evidence for this tribunal are informal. The way in which we will proceed with the hearing are as follows. First, the complainant will present his submissions. If more than five minutes is required, it will be granted in the interest of a fair hearing. Council members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the complainant. Second, the city's case presenter will make submissions. If more than five minutes is required, it will be granted in the interest of a fair hearing. Council members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the city case presenter. Please keep in mind that the questions to the complainant or the city's case presenter must be related to matters that are relevant to this hearing. The complainant and the city's case presenter will then make closing submissions, including a summation of evidence and decisions you are asking this council to make through this hearing. After all submissions are complete, council will make a decision on this matter. Our hearing today is in regard to Dankor Construction Limited, 21 Coventry Road. We will first hear from Tom Halinski, legal counsel for the complainant. Tom, please proceed.
Thank you, your worship. Can everybody still hear me? I've just unmuted and started my video.
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time this afternoon. As you know, the agenda package contains our appeal letter as well as a one-page summary of the grounds. I know my time with you this afternoon is limited, so I'll get to the point. As you know from the request, Dankor is requesting a full refund of the development charges paid in connection with its project, which was a conversion of use or a change of use, as well as an expansion to accommodate a gymnasium. The grounds for the request are firstly undue delays in the processing of the planning applications, which caused severe economic harm to the project, putting in question its viability, and secondly that the charge levied was not based on an actual increased need for municipal services, and in fact Dankor understood that DCs would not be payable in connection with this project. I'd like to start with just a brief point about the jurisdiction that council enjoys under the Development Charges Act. Council, in my respectful submission, has a very broad discretion under Section 20 of the DCA to determine that there was an error in the application of the DC bylaw. I respectfully disagree with staff's conclusion in the report that there's no authority to grant the relief that Dankor is seeking. In my submission, that's an artificial constraint that staff are imposing. It's not found anywhere in the act. In other words, if council is willing and finds the case meritorious, then the DCA provides a lawful way to redress the situation. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on the facts because they're set out in quite a bit of detail in the chronology in the appeal letter. You've read about the delays that the project was subjected to after three years of trying to find a tenant for the zone that permitted uses. Dankor knew that planning of act approvals would be needed, but what it didn't know and wasn't made aware of is that an OPA, zoning bylaw amendment, and site plan approval would be required, or, more to the point, how long that process would ultimately take. The preconsultation meeting for this project took place in May of 2016, and that was strictly for the addition of a proposed school use. In late July, so two months later, the client was finally notified that it couldn't proceed through the committee of adjustment, but in fact would need an OPA, ZPA, and then site plan approval. It submitted those applications as soon as it could, within about six weeks, but it took a year for the OPA and the zoning bylaw amendment to get to council, and throughout, respectfully, the processing of those applications was plagued by delays and late-stage requests for substantial modifications, which not only took time but cost a lot of extra money. The appeal letter, as I noted, goes through this chronology in a lot of detail. And then only after council approved the OPA and zoning bylaw that Dankor is permitted to submit its site plan approval application, which, again, took many more months to process, delaying the opening of the school. Now, on my reading of the staff report, none of those facts are actually in dispute. I would also note, and this is important, that the charges aren't in fact tied to an increased need for services resulting from growth, which is the whole scheme of the act. It's an existing building, a longstanding building, it's been there for decades, and this pertains to simply a change of use to a use of comparable intensity. That's at least as far as the conversion of the former office building goes. That wouldn't pertain to the addition itself. But I'd note that the region doesn't charge DCs for this type of change of use, and in fact, it didn't charge them in this case at all, or I guess provides full credit for the growth slower area. Dankor, my client, has done many developments before. You know, it knows what it's doing. It understands the role that DCs have to play in this approval process and that they're there for growth to pay for growth. But, and to my knowledge, Dankor has never contested or appealed its DCs before. In this case, my client is adamant that there is no increased need for services as a result of this development, at least the change of use, and it's also adamant that he wouldn't have gone ahead with the project had even told DCs would be payable in the discussions with planning and technical staff about this application. I would add that the situation has become dramatically worse for both the owner and the tenant this year. The tenant, Frederick Banting International School, which many of the members of council are probably familiar with, has been physically closed because of the pandemic. It's functioning online only, and its attendance is apparently down by about 50%, so it's going through a very hard time economically. The school is an important contributor to the city, and it's valuable to the community, provides not only a school function but a community function as well. And to be plain about it, a refund of the DCs would allow my client to in turn continue to facilitate the school operating, notwithstanding the hard time it's currently undergoing. In the alternative, and this is very much in the alternative, Dankor submits that the city development charges were incorrectly calculated on the addition. This is also set out in the appeal letter. The charges for the gymnasium addition were calculated based on 623 square meters of GFA, and while that may be physically correct, they ought to have been calculated instead on the basis of the GFA figure net of the mechanical equipment and the washrooms, which amounts to 405 square meters. We'd understood, and this may be just a misunderstanding, we'd understood that staff were in agreement with us about that. Once we saw the report at the end of, I guess on Friday evening, we understood that maybe some broken telephone intervened, and we were not on the same page. So, again, very much in the alternative, council does not find favor with the main request. I'd request that you provide an opportunity for Dankor to finalize those calculations with staff so that the amount can at least be corrected. Subject to any questions, I think this is probably all of my time, and I thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking in the chat box if there's any questions. Don't see any questions. Thank you for your submission. We have the city's case presenter Andrea Wilson-Peoples, legal counsel presenting the city's case. Andrea?
Good afternoon, mayor and members of council. Can I just confirm that everyone can see me and hear me, more importantly? Okay. Thank you. First off, I would like to take counsel to the Development Charges Act provisions that apply in this case. There, I'm not sure if it's best for me to share my screen or if the clerk can just take us to page 11 of the agenda, whichever is easiest.
Andrea, we'll open the agenda and go to page 11.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea, it's an appendix to the report?
Sorry, yes. My page numbering is from what was posted on the city's website. I apologize.
Appendix two?
So, I'm looking for, yeah, appendix two? Thank you. So, first off, I would like to review with council the grounds for a charge under Section 20 of the Development Charges Act. There are three grounds. The first is that the amount of the development charge was incorrectly determined, that credit was incorrectly given or incorrectly applied, and that there was an error in the application of the Development Charges bylaw. Council is not able to make any decision or take broad authority on these appeals. If we could scroll down to subsection six, please? Thank you. This subsection sets out council's powers, and it allows the council to dismiss the complaint or rectify an incorrect determination or error that was the subject of the complaint. So, neither in their written materials nor in their submissions today have the applicant provided any evidence of such an error. The grounds outlined by Mr. Halinski, including the change of use to a comparable intensity, the fact that the region doesn't charge in this case, the undue delays and the economic harms are not grounds under the Section 20 criteria for granting a complaint. For some of these charges, or some of these claims, in fact, it sounds as though the applicant should have appealed the bylaw itself if they didn't agree with how it applies, if they had concerns about charges not being properly based on increased needs. However, this bylaw is not under appeal. We're not here to determine whether the city should or shouldn't charge in accordance with the bylaw. The bylaw is duly approved and in force. The delays that were experienced, I won't go through staff's response to that, but generally speaking, those are not concerns for the purposes of granting a complaint, approval of a complaint under the DC Act. It is council's role on a Section 20 complaint to review the evidence to show one of the three grounds are met. The applicant has provided no evidence that there was any error. They simply object to the application of the charges. In terms of the alternate argument that DCs were incorrectly calculated, staff have been and continue to be willing to refund any amount that was incorrectly charged based on revised plans. It's not possible to simply give a refund without having the appropriate architectural plans, and staff would continue to support a resolution to provide that refund, subject to receipt of these appropriate plans. Just to summarize, the delays that the applicant has described and their objections to the applicant's, or to the application of the bylaw, do not relate to council's authority under Section 20, which requires council to find that there is an error before granting refunds, and staff would be supported of the alternative grounds. Those are my submissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea, we'll now hear closing submissions. Oh, any questions? I don't see any in the chat function. Okay, so, closing submission. Tom Halinski, do you have a closing submission?
I do, very briefly. I think, you know, in terms of the facts, they're uncontroversial before you, and if you find that you have the statutory authority to grant my client's request, I think that the facts not only support it but aren't in question, is between ourselves and staff. I do continue to point to my argument about Section 20 of the Development Charges Act. As the city's council has indicated, there are three heads of relief. The first one is that the amount has been incorrectly determined, and that's certainly part of the request as far as the expansion goes. The second one deals with credit. It doesn't apply here, but subsection C of the act, that there was an error in the application of the Development Charge bylaw, clearly doesn't just refer to the amount, but whether the charge ought to have been levied in the first place. And again, there's nothing in the act or any of the case law that I'm aware of, either the OMBU or the LPAT, that would restrict council's discretion to provide that refund, particularly in a situation where, as I've indicated, there is no increase in the level of services required by the development through the change of use. Subject to any questions, those are my submissions. I would, again, reiterate my client's request that you provide a direct refund of the charges levied in this case. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, any questions? See none in the chat box?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I am not able to access the chat box.
Okay, Counselor Palessi?
Thank you. So, I guess from my understanding, is it of the minds that staff and Dankor are going to continue to work through the spive of the gymnasium to rectify the DCs? Is that my understanding from staff?
Certainly, staff are willing to, upon receipt of revised plans, provide any refund that's owing, but we have tried, since the complaint was initially filed, to reach that resolution and have not been successful to this point. So, really, I think that is a question for Dankor.
And I'll ask the delegate the same question. Are you, will your client be revising their drawings to capture the lesser of the DC?
Thank you for the question, counselor. We're certainly prepared, and again, of course, this is all in the alternative to the main request, but in terms of the expansion, we're prepared to provide the information that staff are looking for. I'm not sure that the drawings have to be revised, so much as I suspect just dimensions may need to be added. You know, this part arises out of a genuine misunderstanding that this matter's been under negotiation between Mr. Zangara and myself for quite some time before Ms. Wilson-Peoples took over the file. So, the short answer is we're quite prepared to keep working with staff on the alternative relief, if that is council's, if council grants the alternative relief.
And is, and I'm assuming that now that that's not the ultimate in the DC credit that you're looking for, what's that portion compared to the overall portion of credits?
You're correct. It's only about a third to a quarter of the amount. We're talking, sorry, I'm just turning to the summary of the DCs. The city of Brampton total was $204,000. Out of that, approximately a little bit more than $40,000 pertains to the expansion. So, this is, that's the amount that we're talking about for the expansion. The rest of it would be the so-called main relief.
So, the $169,000 main relief, I'm at the will of council, but I need you to give me more of an explanation as to why we would be granting the relief of that, and can you also, or can Andrea tell me why the region doesn't charge for this amount in DCs?
So, if I may start with that, and I wonder if I might ask the clerk to bring up the second to last, sorry, the third from the end page of the staff report, where there's a summary of the DCs, because it gives a good illustration of the DCs both at the city level and the regional level. And the short answer, and I think we'll get there in a second, the short answer, as I understand it, is that the city provides a much smaller, provides some change of use credit, but at a much lower rate, whereas the region provides full 100% change of use credit. If you scroll down to the page that has the logo, the Brampton logo, and says Corporate Services Finance, page one of two.
It may be one of the appendices, Charlotte?
It's definitely one of the appendices to the report. Oh, it's, it would probably be the fifth one.
Number five?
Apologies, this is difficult to do in virtual format. That's it. So, if you scroll down a little bit to the table, you can see there's a summary of city of Brampton, and the black line, the black number, $260,000 represents the amount notionally levied, and there is a change of use credit, but you see it's provided at a lower rate, so $49.49 is the rate, per square meter rate it's provided at, whereas the region, which is the next three lines, charged $524,000, give or take, but provided the same amount of credit. In my submission, obviously, they're operating under two different bylaws, but in my submission, the region's approach to the credit is reflective of the fact that on a change of use of this type, there is no increased need for services, and therefore, the act doesn't warrant an additional charge where you've got, you know, an office being changed to a school in an existing building.
Okay, thank you. Andrea, Andrea, are DCs, when it relates to this particular change of use that reflects the region and the proportionate to the city of Brampton, is there similar municipalities that have this difference from the lower tier to the upper tier?
I'm not able to answer that question. I would have to defer to finance staff. But before I do, I, this is actually a very helpful discussion, because what it does demonstrate is that the city's bylaw was correctly applied. In the region, there's a different statutory scheme under the region's DC bylaw, which provides specifically for this type of credit. That's not provided for in the city's bylaw, which, as I mentioned before, was appropriately approved and not appealed by Dankor. So, these provisions are in effect in the city of Brampton. In terms of the policy reasons behind that, I can certainly defer to finance staff, who I know are up.
Andrea, that's kind of where I was going with it. If finance is on the line and if they could give any comments to that?
Good afternoon, Peter Faye. Just checking to see if you can hear my audio.
We can hear you.
Great. Good afternoon, council. This is Janet Lee, manager of capital and development finance at the city of Brampton. Thank you for your question regarding the change of use, development charges, and how they're applied. I just want to make a clarification with regard to Mr. Halinski's comment that he made to, he made it seem like there was an assertion that the region has a difference in philosophy, and that they don't believe that there's an increase in need for service because, as it appears on the invoice, that they applied a full credit to the change of use. The reason why there is a full credit on the change of use on the region's portion is simply because the region's bylaw differentiates the rates simply by either you're industrial or not industrial. So, because this case was simply a change of use from an office building to a commercial building, those two employment types fall under what the region would call non-industrial, and therefore, there was no change of use charge applied on the region appealed bylaw.
It's as clear as mud. Okay, is there, is, do you know of any similar municipalities that have this, the way the region differs the DCs as to the lower-tier municipality?
Thank you for your question regarding the difference between the lower tier and the upper tier. I can't say with certainty at this point in time without doing some background research whether there are differences in the lower tiers in York Region and in the upper tier or in Halton or in Durham Region. That's something I would need to get back to you with some information after I've done some research.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, Andrea Wilson-Peoples, legal counsel, will be presenting the city's closing submissions. Any closing submissions, Andrea?
Normally, in closing submissions, I would review the evidence and take you through the key pieces, but I think that the discussion that we just had really... the key pieces, but I think that the discussion that we just had really clarified exactly what staff's position is. In order to determine that the bylaw was incorrectly applied somehow, council would need to go back and reopen the bylaw, but the bylaw is not before you. It was not appealed. It was duly applied, and the differences in the region and the city's charges are reflected in the language of those respective bylaws. Again, not to repeat Section 20 at any level of detail, but the power of council to issue a refund is based on a discrepancy or error, of which there are none. So absent revised plans to demonstrate that a refund is due with respect to any errors in the plans that the applicant submitted, staff request that council dismiss the complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrea? Hearing none. I have a motion from Counselor Pulashy, seconded by Counselor Vicente, to receive the submissions from the complainant and the city's case presenter. Is there anyone opposed to receiving the submissions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Council, the matter is now before us for decision. We have a motion. Counselor Pulashy, since you're an interesting guy, have you moved the staff recommendation? Seconded by Counselor Vicente. Is that okay, Counselor Pulashy and Vicente?
I would just ask that, you know, staff continue to be able to work with the developer to, I guess, the measurements on what those should look like going forward.
So we have the motion on the floor.
And Mayor Brown happy to second the motion for discussion.
Okay. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. That takes us to public question period. Are there any public questions?
There are none.
There are none. That takes us to confirming bylaw. Item seven, the confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Counselor Santo, seconded by Counselor Vicente, to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing no objections, the motion carries. This takes us to adjournment. Our next council meeting is Wednesday, October 14th, and Wednesday, October 28th at 9:30 a.m. I have a motion moved by Counselor Mederos and Counselor Williams, if they're still on the call.
Yeah.
Wonderful, to adjourn today's meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in affirmative. Hearing no objections, your motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Stay healthy, stay safe. Please practice physical distancing and wear a mask or face covering inside public spaces.